You're listening to Hawk Talk, the official podcast of Henninger Public School, where we cover school news, school board meeting reviews, guest speaker interviews, and much more. Here at Henninger Public School, we challenge all to meet their academic and life goals while inspiring lifelong learning. We are a district that values trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Now, let's go to today's episode. Hey, everybody. Thank you very much for tuning into another episode of Hawk Talk. It is the middle of April, and as we know, that means it is school board meeting summary time. So, we're going to be getting together today again with Darren Siemens and, for the first time, reporter from the Adams County Record, Andy Rail. Andy Rail, thank you very much for coming in today.
Real nice to be here.
Awesome. Okay, so Andy's going to be here. He might ask a few questions here and there. But Darren, let's go ahead and get started real quick. So, you guys, you called the meeting to order. You did pledge of allegiance, confirmation of agenda, and approval of minutes. And let's move on to consideration of bills. That's kind of like the first thing. So, April school board bills and March manual checks, same as previous months before. You guys are just checking things, making sure everything's running fine and everything like that.
Yep, just going through and, excuse me, approving all those different manual checks that have been through. There's always some questions here and there as far as, you know, what was this purchase for? What's that cost for? So, it's always nice to go through that just in case if something gets caught. You know, we're like anybody else, people at home and any other businesses, we try to buy as much as we can local. But, you know, we're using online purchases for different things and making room arrangements when we make it to state for different things. So, sometimes there are some charges where it's like, hold on, what is that? You know, name you don't necessarily recognize. So, it's always good to say, okay, hold on, those are the rooms for state wrestling. Or, hey, those are the rooms for Science Olympiad coming up here this Fargo, or this weekend in Fargo. So, it's just always good to talk about those and kind of, if there's any questions, you can get it out right there. So.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so next up, miscellaneous business. So, we have superintendent and secondary principal report. So, what was the deal with that?
You bet. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna highlight a couple of things that I talked about in my report. Of course, I know these minutes and stuff get submitted to the Adams County Record, so they'll be in the paper coming up here shortly. So, you'll probably see more of that. But, some of the things we talked about is, of course, we do have our Science Olympiad teams. Both our B and C team made it to state. They're actually taking off tomorrow after we're done with our flex day. So, they'll be heading to Fargo and they'll be competing all day Saturday in Science Olympiad at the state level. So, we wish Ms. Block and those kids good luck at that. Some of the other things, of course, this time of the year is we're looking at curriculum for the next year. We kind of touched on this a little bit last time, I think. You know, we have negotiations going on right now, and that's moving along. So, you plan based on what you have right now, right? And we're expecting everybody to be back. No one's retiring that we're aware of, anything like that. So, we base, we make a class schedule, K six, seven, 12, all that, and say, okay, what do we want to continue doing, right? What do we, what do you have to do? What does the state say you have to teach? What are we offering for electives? Do we want to continue to offer the same electives? Do we want to change it up? What are we offering on campus with our teachers? Is there other avenues that we can offer classes via distance from other districts in the state? So, we're moving forward with that. As is usual, kids will be doing their pre-registration. Parents expect that to happen at least three times before it's totally set.
Yep, so kind of going into that, because I've seen that a couple of times now that have been on the high school side. So, the reasoning behind that is to make sure that students are happy with the choices that they've made for whether it be extracurricular or whatever class is correct.
Totally, as happy as we could. I mean, we're trying to do the best we can for as most kids as possible. You know, we are limited, we have limited resources financially, of course, so we try to offer as much as we can with the staff we have. We have a staff that's very well qualified in a lot of different areas. So, we try to keep it in-house as much as possible, because we already have these people on contract, right? We want to keep them busy and all that. But, if there's a need for something else that we can't provide, and there's enough of a need, and it checks all the boxes for finances and availability and all that stuff, then we'd like to try to offer classes that way, too. So, it's kind of a fine dance. I do feel that, for the size of school we are, we offer a lot of electives, and I'm proud of that. There are a lot of schools that have to go to outside resources, because they cannot provide it on campus like we do. So, we're in a lucky situation right now, and hopefully that'll continue into the future.
And you know, in addition to that, if I'm correct, Krista Olson talked a little bit about how, you know, for our school, the amount of CTE extracurricular that we offer are a lot more than your average even large-sized school.
It is, it is. I mean, you got to remember, we're sitting here in one capacity or another, and I mean by capacity as far as class offering, right? We have auto offerings, we have egg offerings, we have business offerings, we have family consumer science offerings, we have technology offerings, and then you have Mrs. Olson during her career stuff. So, we do a lot of stuff there, right? And then we also, we also, so Career and Tech Ed is preparing kids for, sometimes it's immediate employment in the workforce. Sometimes they still go to a two, four-year university, right? And above and beyond. So, you have those tracks that we do, we have a lot of different offerings for. And then, of course, you know, we try to get some dual credit courses in here, too, so that way, kids can graduate and have some credits already done if they see themselves going on to that college level. Sometimes, as far away as we are, it's hard to provide those advanced dual credit courses, because we're so far away from your Dickinson States, Bismarck States. But, we do, we do do that for English. We have some math options as well for dual credit. And honestly, with the way our schedule is, is if you've, as a senior, your senior year, if you've done everything and you're ready to rock and roll, right, you can put yourself in a situation where you could enroll as a freshman for a part-time student somewhere and have time throughout the day to maybe work on classes at home if that's what you wanted to do, if you already knew you were going to go to, you know, a particular university or whatever. And that's an option that honestly, even like when Andy was a kid, was a student back here, we didn't have that. We didn't have that opportunity for these, for the kids. So, you know, if you play your cards right, you pass everything, you work hard and fill in freshman, sophomore, junior year, a lot of times that can leave you with a senior year where you have a lot of different options for you.
Awesome.
So, yeah, okay, curriculum planning, yep. The other thing we're taking a look at is possibly looking for part-time, another part-time special education director. We have, we have a need for that, and the availability to offer those services to our students. Again, not necessarily a full-time position that we're looking at possibly doing. So, there'd be a mix-up where we'd have this individual, if we're lucky enough to find someone, we'd have this individual not only helping with some sped, but also helping with some of those resources, just sitting down and talking about kids about, you know, how do you work through conflict? How do you, you know, some of that conflict resolution type things, and then helping them with that, helping them with strategies as far as staying organized, that kind of stuff, right? Some of those, some of those soft skills things, and those, that safety net stuff that necessarily sometimes we don't, we're not able to provide all the time, because we're focusing on curriculum or academics and stuff like that. The bleacher, the bleacher deal in the gym, we're moving forward with making some changes on that north side of the gym with the bleachers. Mr. Kohler has been doing some fundraising. We had a family, again, I don't necessarily make it public yet. I don't know if I have permission from the family, but there's a family that has donated money to update our head scores table. That led to some questions where it's like, okay, do we want it where we have to lift this 400, 500-pound behemoth into the stands up and down every time? Or is it something that we can renovate the bleachers a little bit and take a section and keep this on the ground and not lose a lot of seating? So, what we've done is we've decided to go with the second option, keep it on the ground. We're gonna, we're gonna have to modify about a nine-foot section, eight-foot section of the bleachers for about the first two rows, and that's it. And then, it'll make it so this thing is easy to move around. It'll make it actually a safer, safer seating environment for whoever's working on that.
Nice.
And honestly, I think it's going to give a nice appeal to the gym and provide some opportunity for some advertising and stuff like that, where we can have some, hopefully generate some revenue to offset some costs of some of the activities and stuff we do. So, we'll be moving forward with that. There was a lot of legislative updates. Of course, it's a biennium, right, where here we are in the legislative year. So, there was a lot of legislative updates that I did with some bills that have been signed by the governor. The pool, the pool's the big thing, right? So, we hired Mrs. Joey Erickson as our pool manager. Mrs. Ebert is the chemical guru that has to be checked three times a day, and she has to balance that and make sure that all those chemicals are within.
A specific range.
Yeah, yeah. So, we have those two in those positions. We actually.
Was there anybody who actually checked like the pH levels before in the old pool? Or is that just kind of a Wild West of a pool?
No, you worried about back when in your youth?
No, I'm not saying I might have, might have needed extra chemicals in the pool after I swam in it, but I just figured I'd ask, because I don't think I ever knew anybody who had checked on that.
That was, that was, Dolores Galbreth did that for a long, long time. Dolores Galbreth was very involved in the pool and with the swim team and stuff like that. So, Dolores Galbreth is the one who did that before Mrs. Ebert. Mrs. Ebert did that at the end of our old pool's life, if you want to call it that. And so, she's got a lot of experience there. Certification that you have to do, you can't just be Joe Blow and say, hey, I want to do that job. You have to, there are certifications that you have to have with the state health department and all that. So, so we're moving forward there. We currently have applications out for lifeguards, for assistant lifeguards, and for people to work at the, inside the office area. So, we're hoping to have those positions hired by May 3rd, and then we will use that remainder of the school year in May, where we'll get our students in there in elementary, FIAD, and high school, health, and FIAD. And then we'll be rocking and rolling and ready to go for swim lessons and open swim and all this stuff in the summer. Mrs. Erickson's coming up with a lot of different things she wants to do. We want to do more than just have the pool, right? Having, having people that have been born and raised in Henninger, we've always had a very strong, like, summer baseballs program, right? Coach pitched, all that kind of stuff. And then it was the pool. And it's like, well, that's awesome if you're into those two things. What if, but what if that's not your jam, right? So, the school, we're looking at doing some other things, albeit it might be for short time periods throughout the summer, but kind of some other things that we can do using the campus facility that provides some opportunities for some arts, provide some opportunities for some other things that kids can partake into.
Oh, great. So, and that's going to be happening down in that, that small classroom area?
It's actually, so by us using and keeping it in the school, and the school managing it, we'll be able to use the entire campus. So, if there's something that we want to use the big gym for, we'll use the big gym for it. If there's something we need to use a classroom for, we're going to use the classroom for it.
That's awesome.
So, yeah, so I'm excited about that.
Just a real quick side question regarding the pool and the amenities that are going to be offered. Is there potential to bring back Inflatables Night, which hasn't been seen since like 2005?
Again, I don't, I don't want to like totally like.
Well, it's not out of the question, right?
Not out of the question at all, Andy. Not at all.
And then, as far as like before, there were diving boards and a slide. Is that returning as well?
So, we have one diving board, and it is, it is not as high as the other one because of regulations on how deep the pool is. So, there is one diving board in there, and then there is no slide, but it has been plumbed for a slide in the future.
So, not out of the question?
Not out of the question. When we're done here, we'll go down, because I know you've seen some pictures on Facebook and stuff. When we're done here, we'll go down and you can take a look in there, and then you can post or do whatever you want to do with that, too.
Right on.
Yeah. And then, of course, we're finishing up our NDSA testing. And then, one of the last things is, of course, Teacher Appreciation Week is May 8th through the 12th. A lot of times, we do things in-house here to let our colleagues know we appreciate what they're doing. But, you know, out there, if you're a parent or whoever in the community, you know, May 8th through the 12th is Teacher Appreciation Week. So, the other thing, of course, is we had Mrs. Cindy Arndorfer, North Dakota DPI Adams County Teacher of the Year.
Yes.
That was announced this week. So, we, that was a part of the, part of my report, too. So.
Fantastic. Well, congratulations there, Cindy.
I was, yes, and I'm saying sorry, because it's a lot of talking. I apologize.
No, that's, that's what we're, that's why we're doing this. That's awesome. So, to make sure that I'm in the right spot on this, did you also go through, it looks like Athletic Director Report as well? Is that kind of part of these things, or was that all superintendent and secondary?
All of that was mine. Yeah, sorry. All that was mine. So, what I do, it's a little longer here, because, of course, the board gets these reports before the meeting. So, out of everything I just went through, I pretty much just talked about three of them last night, and then said, hey, did you got any questions on anything else in my report? But, again, because not everybody gets that, I wanted to kind of touch base on it. So, then, of course, like Mr. Erickson does his elementary report.
Yep.
Right? Mr. Kohler does his AD report. So, some of the things I'm just going to pull out of Mr. Erickson's that he talked about, we're excited. Mrs. Schneider, Mr. Brooke Schneider, one of 30 teachers in the United States, one of 30, that was selected for a Science Technology Engineering Arts and Math Innovative Grant, where it's pretty much like an all-expense trip to Washington DC for two weeks this summer and two weeks the summer of 2024. So, she'll be working with those other 29 and different resources they have available in Washington DC. And what's nice is it's professional development for her. I mean, that's what it is. So, she'll bring those skills that she learns back here to us.
Back here. And it wasn't just like, oh, hey, I want to be a part of this. Like, I mean, she had to put a video together, she had to do an application, and I mean, she had to persuade her reasons why she deserved that spot. And she earned that spot. So, big congratulations to Miss Schneider.
Big time. You know, so the other thing, of course, we had the math meet. That was, that was awesome. We had 13 teams end up making it to that. I think there was close to 17 or 18 that were invited, but of course, if you remember that day, we had some, some bad weather a little bit. And then, and then, so we did real well in there. Jake Kessel and, excuse me, Dax and Conkle, Nathan Buckmeyer were some individual place winners for us. And we had some of our elementary, elementary classes did good, our fourth and fifth placed second. So, that was, that was very fun. And then, we had a couple of kids go off to the state spelling bee. Dax and Conkle participated up there. Ally Burns placed fifth. Pretty awesome. We're proud of that. And then, again, he just kind of went through some of the things he has coming up here in the remainder of April and May. It's going to, it's, spring's busy. I mean, we.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
All the sports going on, but the elementary's busy, too. I mean, they got the bike safety coming up, and you got the first graders doing airplane rides, and there's Earth Day activities, and there's field trips to the Heritage Center, and, and just all kinds of things going on. So, he kind of went through that. So.
Not to backtrack at the math meet, but if we're on the topic of congratulatory notes to teachers here, Dave Erickson also won an award.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. Yep, yep. Yeah, so that, the math meet, it was, it was nice. So, Mr. Erickson was not able to go to the Drivers Education Conference this year. He actually sits on the state board, by the way, of the drivers, of that council. So, and that's, that's, that's an honor in itself. But, we were made aware that he was selected as North Dakota Drivers Education Teacher of the Year. So, very, very deserving of that as well. Mr. Erickson does a great job with that. He teaches the class portion of Drivers Education, and then he and Mr. Burwick split the kids for the driving portion. So, and, I mean, we offer that not only to Henninger students, but we offer it to, you know, Scranton, Bowman. We get kids out of South Dakota that come. This year, he's got a kid coming from Fargo to participate in ours. Last year, he had a kid from Minot that came. And we get kids from Mott, we get kids from Lemon. So, it's a very, it's a strong program. And actually, it goes all the way back to Mr. Rinkie started that program back in like the 60s or something. It's crazy. So, but no, yeah, Mr. Erickson got that award as well. So, we're proud of, proud of that as well. So.
So, a lot of good accomplishments from our staff here at the school lately.
Have you gotten any awards lately, Joel?
No, no, I have not.
Well, there's still time.
I'm still fighting for that partner and community pride again from the Chamber of Commerce. Our officer took it from us this year, but we'll be coming back for it again.
And then, I guess, like I say, the Athletic Director, Mr. Kohler, always goes through and lets the board know what, what sporting events are taking place, where kids are going, where the buses are traveling and moving and going. So, he went through that report. And then, of course, we had our Student Council report. Mrs. Henderson does that on a quarterly basis, where she reports on the high school student council. They're kind of wrapping up things for the year. They're looking at trying to do some fun activities that last week of school. So, it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. I'm sure we'll be doing some barbecues and that kind of stuff up here, you know, and moving forward with that. And of course, they're already, they're already looking at next year's homecoming. You know, so that Student Council does a great job. They're looking at, what do we need to get ready for homecoming next year? I believe, don't quote me without having the calendar in front of me, it's that last week around in September or somewhere in there. So, when we get back, if they don't start planning now, it really puts a rush on things. So, so she talked about that, and that kind of took us through all of the usual reports that she sees. So.
Awesome. Okay, so that kind of goes through, you know, superintendent, secondary principal report, elementary. Have we gone over Athletic Director Report? Just to make sure we haven't missed anything?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we just, like I say, Mr. Kohler gives an update on where everybody's going based upon the season. We got track going all over the place as much as we can. With the weather, of course, that's been very, very difficult. We got baseball going all over the place. He's got elementary volleyball going all over the place. And then, of course, we got the, the summer camp season is upon us, too, here pretty soon. So.
Oh, wow. Yep, yep, that's very, very true. So, let's move on to unfinished business here. So, in this next section, Eng Tech update. What do you got for us?
So, that one there, there's really not a lot, because that Eng Tech update goes along with the pool. So, the architect has been down a couple of times as we're getting close to the end of that pool. He's doing punch list items, double checking, making sure things are being done correctly. So, it's nice to have that overseen taking place at times. I wish it would have been a little more active at other stages, but I guess it is what it is. The SR grant on there, again, that's just some of that COVID money, you know, that, the timeline on, well, not the timeline on that, but we've been recouping that. We've been using that money for different learning loss type purchases, looking at redoing some curriculum. We're looking at actually making some changes in our science lab and trying to bring that thing back into the 21st century instead of, you know, 1983. So, with that, we're just looking at, again, talking about how we're using some of that money. We're going to actually use some of that money later on here with a purchase we made to be a little more self-sufficient in the winter, so we can, or though, I guess I'd say, I should say a hoped purchase, to get, to get some facilities or get some equipment on, on campus, so we can take care of our own snow removal and stuff like that. So, of course, the bleachers, that was in there, too. So, they took action to move forward with that bleacher plan that I talked about, and then with Mr. Kohler, moving forward with that.
Yep. So, moving forward to the next thing that you have on here is second reading policy, GCBB Student Progress Reports to Parents. What, what is that?
So, again, that's, last time, it was the first reading when we, when we got together last month. What we're doing is we're moving, we're moving our, away from sending everything out in mail as a way to hopefully save some money. So, what that policy is, is just put it, making it, making it official that we're gonna, we're gonna use digital resources as our main way to send home progress reports, report cards, that kind of thing. But, if, as a parent, you can still request a paper copy and pick it up at the office.
Deal. So, aside of that, you got park board agreement, bid for tractor at Egg Pro, and busing letter from Lemon School District.
You bet. So, the park board agreement, actually, that, that was, the park board, a couple of park board members came to the school and said, hey, we, we were looking at that agreement that's between the two entities. I don't think it had been like reviewed since 2005 or something like that. So, it was like, okay, we need to sit down and just make sure everyone's aware of what are we doing to help each other out, right? So, we went through that agreement. It was a very good meeting with a couple of park board members and a couple of school board members. So, that agreement was just brought forward last night to the entire board, and, and it passed. I know that the park board had a meeting last night, too, and I would imagine that that was on their agenda there as well. So, again, that just kind of outlines the use of the Legion Field. It outlines the use of the football field, the softball diamonds down there, who owns what, who's paying for what, that kind of stuff. The tractor thing at Egg Pro, so that kind of goes back to some of that SR money idea. So, it's been difficult in the last couple of years trying to get anyone to bid snow removal up here at the school. So, ultimately, it's come down to pretty much begging people to do it. So, we've been fit in to other people's busy schedules, and then at times, those of us that have our own equipment, bring it and use it when, when we can, and that kind of stuff. So, it's really been a hodgepodge of stuff. And this last year, you know, we were, we could have had some pretty bad issues on the playground when we had that quick thaw. But, we got, we got helped out. Mr. Arndorfer came and helped us move a bunch of that snow back there and the ice and stuff that was built up. So, in essence, what we're doing is there's a, there's a very small-sized tractor out there at Egg Pro, and we're looking at, going to offer, make an offer to them to try to get that as a piece of our equipment here. And then, we'll also be able to use that to unload, unload things that come in on the trucks to where, again, we have things delivered here, and then all of a sudden, well, we got to go find either a bobcat, or we need to call the guys out at that DFC lumber and say, can we use your forklift? So, you know, to make us a little more independent, I guess, and not bothering everybody all the time.
And you have some folks here at the school who are knowledgeable and in a position where they can operate the tractor and whatnot. So, it's like self-sufficient.
Yep, yep. We'll have staff here that'll do that with, between the janitorial staff, and then, of course, we'll have some of the staff that are even administrators, classroom teachers. We'll have, we'll have a handful of people that are able, able to work that machine, you know?
You don't want me trapping a forklift, man.
So, so, yeah, that's kind of where we're at there. The letter for, the busing letter from Lemon, so that's just, we were made aware by some of the, some of our parents in the South Dakota country down there, lodgepole area that way, we were, we were made aware that they received a letter from Lemon, kind of talking about Lemon possibly making some busing changes, route changes over there. So, no decisions. I don't think Lemon has made any decisions, and until that's done, our board really can't make any decisions either. So, we're just kind of waiting to see what happens, right? And then, what can we do to provide a service to those kids so they can continue to come to Henninger Public School?
Okay, awesome. So, then, next up, new business. Looks like you got open enrollment, summer school, Drivers Ed. What do you got for those three guys there?
You betcha. So, we had, we had an open enrollment form that come across the desk. Being where we are with the cross-border situation that we have, we have kids from South Dakota come here. We have kids that are in Adams County that go to South Dakota. So, those types of things. So, when a family has, has a kid that's coming up into school, and they want to continue to go where they've been going for generations, or where the siblings are, that requires them to do an open enrollment form with, with whatever their home school district is, albeit that that may not be where that family's been going for, since the dawn of time, possibly, right? So, again, that's just, it's just a formality procedure that takes place, and that's what it was last night. We hadn't had that form, and it was, it was approved to move forward with that open enrollment. Yeah, and kind of going that way. Yeah, being born and raised in Adams, in Henninger, I'm kind of ashamed to even say this. This is a big county. And to be honest with you, for most of my life, I have a very good idea of central and western Adams County. In eastern Adams County, I, it's big over there. And there's a lot of space, and there's a lot of families that, I got to be honest with you, in my 43 years, I didn't even know that they were in Adams County. So, my point being is, is that our county is huge. So, to expect a kid from either the eastern border or western border to be on a bus and come all the way to Henninger, it's not really realistic, because they're going to spend hours, hours upon the bus. So, sometimes it's, it's more equitable for them to go to Lemon, or go to Mott, or go, you know, just like, sometimes it's more equitable for kids to come here, because it's closer than Bison, or it's closer than. So, anyway. Summer school, Drivers Ed. So, that's, that's, so summer school, these were both updates from Mr. Erickson, because these are programs that he's in charge of. So, it's just, again, it's one of those situations where summer school letters will be, are going to be sent out, or are in the process of being sent out to K6 kids, to where the school is offering some summer school options there. So, it was just more informational for the board. There'll be some action we'll take in May, because we'll have to do some contracts for teachers to teach that in the summer. Again, his Drivers Ed update was just talking numbers. When is he going to start? I think that starts May 22nd, I believe. Class time is two weeks. The first two weeks, it's classes in the morning, and then they start to drive in the afternoon. There is no Drivers Ed on Memorial Day. So, so that's, there's something, in the past, we have had class on Memorial Day. So, there is no Drivers Ed on Memorial Day. So, that takes us through that. And then, we have the activity bus.
Yeah, so, so you guys are looking for an activity bus driver, correct?
Correct. So, this district's been looking for that position for a long time. We've had, we've had, you know, you go back in the past, Terry Miller used to drive the activity bus to like everything. And then, over the years, I know John Jeffries drove for sports when he was back home. Mr. Berkeley drove, went to fit into his schedule. And I'm sorry, the minute I start naming names, I know I'm going to leave somebody else. I apologize. But, we had a long, long span there where we had some pretty good drivers, right, that were taking that on. And now, it's fallen down where, to where, we're trying to cover that in-house, because, because no one, you know, we haven't been able to find anybody in the community that wants to take that role on and drive that activity bus, whether it's going to State Music, or whether it's going to Science O, or the sporting event or any of that kind of thing. So, so we're just actively looking for that, for that driver who, who wants to, wants to, you know, drive and get paid to watch the game, you know? And I say that, like, oh, it's not a big deal, but it is a big deal. It's a lot of responsibility. It's a lot of responsibility. And, but it is, it is for, for someone that's interested in, in, in watching. but it is, it is for, for, for someone that's interested in, in, in watching these things and being a part of the program. It isn't, it is a nice opportunity. And there's some stuff that we can do. CDL stuff has changed. So there's some help that we can do on cost and stuff like that if we get the right applicants. So.
So, you know, in addition to that too, you know, drive, having a driver for those activities, I mean, talking, talking about making an impact and also lightening the load on the school. Cause I mean, us trying to find people to get, you know, get these kids to places for these activities. I mean, talk about a massive help for the staff here at the school.
It would be. Yep. Totally. Totally. It'd take a lot of pressure off of everyone that's trying to fill in for the time being. The other part with that is, is of course, you know, we need to start planning for a replacement for an activity bus. Doesn't need to be done this year. It doesn't need to be done next year, but right now it, when you order a bus, it's two years out. So you can't wait until the wheels fall off of these things and think that, hey, we can get a bus in a month. So again, it's just one of those things we were talking about. Don't forget when we're working on budgets and we're working through all this stuff, there's going to be that cost out there in the, in the future. So what are we doing? What are we doing to build up the resources for that?
Awesome. So then also too, we have a resolution 3010.
So that was, it was, again, this is my second year as superintendent. So there's a lot of, I'm a newbie. I mean, I'm, I'm still an infant in this whole superintendent world. So as the legislature passes bills and they're signed and all this stuff. We actually got a paper copy of a resolution that they put out. You know, again, when I was principal, I was never privy to any of that information. So it was just more something for their packet to look at and say, okay, I guess this is, this is one of the ways that the legislature is going to communicate bills and laws with us. So it was just more of a read, something I've never seen before besides when I'm, when I was a history teacher trying to look at government stuff and all that. So it was just, it was just more here informational, more than anything. So.
Gotcha. All right. So then our last thing here, executive session with legal authority of NDCC 440419. Negotiation strategy.
So because it's negotiations, we went into executive session and the administration was asked to stay there as well. And, and that's just where the board talks about different things that are coming out of the negotiations with the, with the teachers. You know, so just trying to, just throwing things around and trying to get some stuff to where, you know, we can get those contracts out, get them signed and move on with to the 23, 24 academic year. So.
Awesome. Well, that pretty much wraps everything up for, for this episode of Hawk Talk. I'd like to thank Andy for, for coming in today and talking with us. Hopefully next time I'll have a pair of headphones and a microphone for you. So you don't have to share it.
No problem.
But here, but thank you very much, Andy.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have a question?
I did. Just a teensy, teensy tiny little question. There was like a, a pre-game school board meeting yesterday at like 3:30.
Yep.
And I just wanted to get like a slight overview of what happened there.
So I'll be honest with you. I was not at that because I was, I was getting ready for an egg advisory committee meeting that I had before the school board meeting. So that, that was a negotiations meeting between the teachers that they had negotiators of the teachers and the, the two representatives from the board. So that meeting last night, I believe, so what they do is they, with the agreement that they have, they kind of flip flop. One meeting, the teachers make the agenda. The next meeting, the, the board members make the agenda. So I believe last night was the teachers' turn to, to bring forth their proposal, their ideas to the board. A lot of times there's, there's discussion on clarification of stuff. But ultimately no agreements are like hammered out in there and like hands shaken and all that and signed. Because it has to be brought to the entire school board to be voted on. So that's just, that's the negotiation committee meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Just thought I'd check.
Yeah, you betcha. Next, and they'll, so the next one is May 3rd. So if you want to come up and check it out, there, it, there's not a lot of information. There's not, you're not, I mean, it's pretty, pretty vanilla. But the next one is May 3rd. And then there's a, actually the night before, there's a special school board meeting and that's, I mean, they're open to the public for negotiations. So, yeah.
Very good.
Awesome. Well, uh, next school board meeting is pretty much the end of school here. I can't believe I'm saying that already. I feel like we just got started. But May 17th, 2023 at 6:00 PM.
Yep.
Again, Darren, thank you very much for coming in and sitting down. Thank you, Andy.
I like, yeah, Andy, thanks for coming up here, you know, and I continue to come. And, and like I say, it'll, we'll get you your mic and stuff. That way you could ask questions a little bit easier as we move forward, but it gives you a chance of what we're trying to do to pump some information out to the community here too. So.
Yep, absolutely. All right. So thank you everybody for tuning into Hawk Talk. Remember you can listen to Hawk Talk anywhere that you listen to your podcasts, whether it be Apple Podcasts, Spotify Podcasts, any of those platforms out there. You can just search for Hawk Talk HPS and you'll find us and have a great day.